We have a public hearing. And we have two items. The first is ordinance number 2015-07-068, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement at 3106 North Cunningham Avenue for Green Vista's LLC. And this is in connection with Stark Excavating. And then we have a resolution number 2015-07-038R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option for the Housing Authority of Champaign County to lease or purchase the former Urbana Townhome site. Hi, you want to talk about this first? Or not?
I might have beat the bullet here, actually, a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this hearing on either of these topics? Doesn't seem like there's anyone that wants to talk about this.
Mayor?
Yes.
It should be noted that we have email from representatives of the Frasca Field regarding The Frascas are requesting a 35-foot height restriction to be compatible with the existing airport runway approach.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, if there's no one else, I will close the hearing then. We will move on to the Urbana City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two, July 20th, 2015, and July 27th, 2015, a special meeting. Move approval?
Second.
I think it was Aaron Ammons first. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Additions to the agenda, we have a summary and update on the IDOT Traffic Stop Task Force by Pete Resnick for 15 minutes. Pete Resnick, I would remind you, sat through our entire meeting last time, so he's early this time. Make up for the previous punishment.
I thank the council for their indulgence, putting me up front in the agenda this time. With any luck, I will have a presentation for you. Magic. Good evening. I've only been given a little bit of time. I understand that your agenda is very tight tonight. I will try to make this quick. I will stick around for public comment after, if folks want to come up and give public input on the topic, just in case there are additional questions. So, you have received by now the preliminary findings of the Urbana IDOT Traffic Stop Data Task Force. I've gotten very good at saying that all in one breath. And I want to give you just a short summary of what's in the report, and then leave it open for questions from you folks. Just so you understand the structure of the report, there's an executive summary up top. We have a literature review of some of the research that we did for the report, a full statistical analysis of the statistics that we looked at, a discussion of community impact, and I'll talk about each of these topics a bit, and then a police procedure and public engagement section, which includes our detailed recommendations. And finally, there's an appendix of the details of the statistical analysis, which goes on for many pages, and those of you with much more math background than myself can brave that. It's a bit daunting, at least for those of us without statistics background. In the statistical analysis section, the main section, in the main section of the report, there were several findings that we made that I'd like to go through. First of all, upfront, let me say, the finding, which is not, should not be surprising, it's why we endeavored on the report, was that African-American drivers are stopped disproportionately in Urbana. There is no similar disproportionality among Hispanic and Asian drivers when it comes to stops. So this is almost entirely an issue with African-American drivers. Much of the disparity that we see, however, can be accounted for by patterns of policing. What does that mean? We did a study of specific geocodes throughout the city, and the populations in each of those areas, the racial makeup of each of those areas, and the number of stops that were made. Most of the racial disparity that we see corresponds to where police are doing those calls for service. A lot of this is what we have talked about in the report as hotspot policing, police going to areas where there is crime reported, where there has been a pattern of crime reported, and making, in some instances, investigatory stops. That is, pulling people over for traffic violations, but also doing additional investigation regarding those crime incidents that they're looking at. When we compared this to, for instance, the STEP program, STEP is when the police go out, let's say, go to a particular corner because there have been lots of traffic accidents, or they're looking for particular traffic violations. When we compare the statistics with the STEP program, the STEP program sees far less of disparity. There still is some, but when they're specifically looking for traffic violations, the disparity is not so large. We did see some disparity that is only accountable by way of what we'll call bias. That is, we took a look at the data using a veil of darkness study, this is something that's been used elsewhere, where what we do is compare the statistics of stops at a time of year when the sun would be down at a particular hour, and compare it to a time of year when the sun would be up at that same hour, and see if the disparities are the same. They are not the same. When it is dark outside for that same hour of the day, the disparities tend to be less. This is a far smaller number than we see for the patterns of policing issue, and we can talk a little bit further down. I'll talk about implicit bias as one of the possible accountings for this, but we do see some disparity nonetheless. The other thing that we saw statistically is that African-American and Hispanic drivers have disproportionate outcomes for traffic stops. Both are more likely to receive citations than warnings as compared to white drivers. There are higher fines associated with being African-American or Hispanic. Much of that, we found, is due to the types of citations that are being given. Some of those are lack of insurance, lack of registration, are much higher fines than other things that people are pulled over for in traffic stops, and there are multiple fines associated with that. I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to recommendations. And we found some small disparity in the number of times that such drivers get searched subsequent to a stop. Those numbers have decreased in recent years, and overall numbers of stops have decreased in recent years as well. The second part of the report looked at community impact. We looked at this from several angles. We did interviews with community members. We held a town hall to collect testimonial information from community members. We did a bunch of literature research on the disparate impact, and we looked at the outcome data that we had available to us. One thing of great note is that the financial impacts are very disparate. African-Americans, and to a similar extent Hispanic drivers, are stopped more often and therefore have a likelihood of getting tickets, just by sheer numbers. The fines tend to be higher, again, because of the types of violations that they are given, and what we had been talking about is sort of a compounding effect of financial hardship. As you might imagine, folks who get a ticket for multiple things, those fines will start to add up, but you might also take into consideration, for folks in a low-income neighborhood, which many of these are what we're talking about, the odds that someone has not paid for their insurance is a great deal higher. And so the likelihood of getting that particular ticket is higher in those particular neighborhoods. And of course, as these tickets compound, you end up not paying, you get your car towed because you are unable to pay those fines, or you are driving on a suspended license because you haven't paid for previous fines, or can't afford the registration. These things tend to pile onto each other. The other things that we looked at with regard to community impact were the social, psychological, and physical impacts. I think it should be obvious to most that being stopped repeatedly would increase the anxiety of drivers who continue to get stopped. In African-American experience, what we hear about is a true fear for physical safety. And we'll talk a little bit about, in a moment, part of where that comes from, but this is an active fear for physical safety among drivers who get pulled over in the African-American community. Putting these two things together, the increased number of stops and that increased anxiety, and an actual fear for safety, results in a situation where there's a higher risk of really dangerous outcomes. People who are anxious react poorly, react in a worried and not predictable manner. Officers who come upon people who are acting in that way tend to heighten their reactions, and these things can ratchet up, and obviously disastrous results can occur. One thing that I want to highlight, and we highlighted a couple of places in the report, is that these negative impacts will exist independent of whether the disparities are justified by the types of policing that are done. So, we have to be conscious of the impacts, even if we decide that certain kinds of policing are necessary in particular neighborhoods. Finally, the last section of the report is on police procedures and public engagement. There's a good discussion of different police procedures and how the police are engaging the public. The department is already making significant efforts in these areas, including during the course of the life of the task force. The police department was taking feedback from us as we were going along, making changes to their procedures, trying out different things. So they've been collecting more data on traffic stops. They've been training officers all along on how traffic stops should be used as an enforcement tool. They've been doing implicit bias training. For those who might not be aware of this term, there is a good deal of research and some interesting studies you can look at if you would like some references on implicit bias. That is, even if there is no overt conscious racial bias, many folks, including, by the way, not just white officers, but black officers, the studies are pretty consistent, folks have implicit biases about who to pull over. There are changes in behavior that have an increased likelihood of traffic stops. And the department has been already doing trainings with officers on implicit bias and the impacts that can have, and how to address it. The other thing the department has been doing to date is doing a good deal of engagement with the public, including these cops' corners videos, doing ride-alongs with the public, engaging in lots of ways. Obviously, what we found as we went through is that plenty more can be done. And we encourage both the department to look at the recommendations, as well as the city council and the community. There are recommendations for all in the report. One of the things we would like to look at in the future is hotspot policing and investigatory stops. There's a good deal of data that investigatory stops, that is, doing traffic stops in targeted areas for targeted purposes, does have an effect on the crime rate. One of the things that there's not a good amount of information on is whether doing random stops in hotspot areas does anything for those crime rates. We looked through literature on this. We would like to collect more data about the efficacy of hotspot policing and these sorts of investigatory stops that we're doing. We also would like the department to work with the community, to make them aware that these kinds of additional policing are happening in their neighborhood, how to engage about that, and start those discussions between the community and the police department. We also make several recommendations regarding collecting and analyzing more data regularly in the future. This is something that has to be an ongoing process. We would like both the department, but more importantly, the city council, to review ticketing practices and fines. The fact is that we don't need to have disproportionate impact, especially on a community that can least afford that impact. If police happen to be doing patrols in areas to address significant crime issues, and I happen to commit the same sort of offense living in that neighborhood, then if I were in some other neighborhood and that's the reason I get the ticket, that's obviously not fair to me, just because I happen to live there. This is something that should be looked into and addressed, and we've given several recommendations. We would like the city council to look into programs to help lower-income drivers with insurance. There are evidently programs that exist today for low-income drivers to get cheaper insurance, to make that available to them. I put down this bullet item without too much comment, simply because it's complicated, and we can have a long discussion if you like. The task force would like the city council to look into cannabis policy with regard to traffic stops. We had a long, and Alderman Jacobson can tell you about our freewheeling discussion regarding this, it's complicated, but we are acutely aware that being pulled over for a traffic stop and then getting the additional ticket for a cannabis violation is none too pleasant and adds to that financial burden. We recognize that the current state of affairs, which is giving tickets instead of doing state crime violation, is better than the alternative, but we do want the city council to look into this. We gave some guidance in the report that you can look at, and again, Eric can talk more about the details. We also want to encourage more community engagement programs. That includes preventative programs for citizens, understanding how to avoid getting the ticket in the first place, and dealing with, if you have gotten a ticket, how to address this, and not make yourself a deeper and deeper hole. We encourage the Walk is One program, and would like the city of Urbana to be doing that sort of thing. And we think that meetings between the police and community members are vitally important to get everybody on the same page and to understand what's going on. Finally, a few notes. The task force clearly considers this the beginning, not the end. Doing this review and making recent changes that the department has done is a good first step, but this is a short-lived task force. We've existed for just over a year. This problem needs ongoing review and analysis, and it needs additional public engagement. This is something that can be assigned to other groups. I'm on the Human Relations Commission. There are other folks who can take on these kinds of tasks in the future. We think that this needs to be the beginning, not the end. The other important note, and we point this out at the beginning of the report, this is happening in a larger context, and we all recognize that. National context about issues of differential policing and racial bias and all of this clearly informs how citizens view this particular topic. And indeed, if you take a look at the community impact statements, clearly, national issues are impacting how people deal with and feel about the police force here, even though, as the report points out, our police department is considered a pretty good example of how to do this stuff. This does affect how people deal with the department and deal with traffic stops. And we want to make clear that we should address these issues now to prevent the kinds of tragic encounters that we see elsewhere. We don't want to just leave this hang and have something terrible happen here because we haven't addressed the issue. The public comment period for our preliminary findings is open until September 30th. The task force is continuing its regular monthly meetings on the third Wednesday of the month until then, and we will have a final report to the city council at the end of October. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Diane.
First of all, thank you very much, Pete. I have started going through the report, and I'll have some comments, but one of the things that struck me fairly quickly was that there was frequently mentions of the financial impact, as you alluded to, but I haven't yet found in the report an actual list of what some of these fines are. So I did some digging on my own. I ended up at the State and Illinois site and got some information. So that, one thing that I think would be very useful in the report is actually, this is what the financial impact can be. And then the second part of that would be, which of these fines are actually under, are set by the city? And it seems, the impression I got is, most of these fines and the amounts are actually out of the city's, not in the city's control, or even the county's control, that they're set by the state. Is that, is that true or not?
Most of the fines that we were talking about are set, as far as I can tell, by the city, and I believe we do have a list, and I'm scrolling down through the statistical, yes. If you take a look, it starts at page 66 or 65 with different fines, and I believe many of these are provided by city ordinance. There are some that are not.
Even, I don't, I'm not, I'm going to double-check that.
I'm going to, Eric might have an answer to this question.
So, I'm still a little baffled because the state motor vehicle site says that these fines are set by cities, by municipalities, but I have not been able to find any city ordinances that do.
They're not in our city ordinance.
There is a schedule, there is a fine schedule that's on the Circuit Clerk's website, which of course is a county office. So I think this is something that we really need to look at, because I think it's very, very clear that, under the present circumstance, the traffic fine system is having, I'll use a hard word for this, or a serious word, a grotesquely disparate financial impact on low-income people. The fines are definitely large enough that for somebody who's at the margins, they don't know how they're going to pay the fine and the rent and the car insurance and the grocery bill. It's, so, so I think, I think we have to look really hard at this. We have to look at what's under our control. I think what's not under our control, but if we feel that there's, you know, a lack of justice or proportion in the system, then we have to look at lobbying whoever it is for, to really have a better system.
Well, you know, I mean, the goal is to get to pay the insurance rather than pay fines, so I prefer that we focus on that aspect of it, if we can. So I guess I haven't gotten to page 66 yet, so.
And that's in the statistical detail section, so, and I know we looked at a schedule of fines at some point. I don't know if the schedule actually made it into the report.
If it didn't, it will, yeah.
Charlie.
Yeah, one of the things that, and this sort of segues into the meeting that Aaron and others, that the local union offices held on Wednesday, is the issue of taking away somebody's driver's license for maybe, you know, not directly related of traffic offenses, when they're trying to get to work. You know, we want people working so they can pay different things. So a question I would have for our legal staff would be to, to find out how our own fines and citations mesh with the states, and what ability we have to, say, control those levels. Do we substitute, can we substitute local ordinances that would in turn give us local control of fines in place of state, state fines that, you know, and things that are automatically taking place because we don't have something on our own books? And it sounds like it might be something like that going on here. You know, we refer to stuff, but it falls back on a state-level ordinance because we don't have anything local. So, I know with the cannabis thing, for example, you can give a local ticket versus a state full-blown investigation. So there's an example of where we have some local control where clearly we can set, set the price. So, that's a request for our legal staff.
I wanted to say, I did initial comment to the task force, which was, if you look at why the police are there, there's a greater disparity between who the crime victims are and the population than there is in the traffic stops. There's, in the census, African-Americans are 17% of the population, but as crime victims, they're 42%. So, it, all, what you said is all true. I think what goes on at the national level affects how people interpret things, and we, we want to prevent any disaster happening here, so this whole thing, look at the big picture, try to find out what we can do on the financial end so people don't feel that they're just being driven over the edge, and have discussions so people understand why the police are there. But they, like young kids, have to learn how you interact with an officer, instead of being really hostile, you know, just be polite. And if we fix the fine situation, I think we can make some real progress here. But the discussions are key to everything. And one of the problems that, that we came across was the people that testified at the hearing that we had over at the Civic Center, when I talked to some of them, they weren't even talking about interactions with Urbana Police, and I think that needs to be made clear.
So, a couple of points that you brought up. I think addressing the fine issue is important. I think, and this is, we've had discussions with, Andy Charles was on the task force with us, Sergeant Charles. We have had discussions about the difficulty of squaring the general police policy, which is, treat everybody the same, which is good. And the potential for, in neighborhoods where you're doing these kinds of patrols for high crime, treat people maybe a little different. That is, give more warnings than you would normally citations because these people are being pulled over for similar violations, but just in higher numbers, simply because of where your officers are. And that's, that's going to be a very difficult line to walk, but giving more warnings in those areas would obviously assist with the financial impact. I think those engagements and education for drivers and officers is important. I think there's, you've got a little bit of a chicken-and-egg problem, because folks who have been pulled over repeatedly, who've had really bad experiences, you can't simply say at this point, okay, Magic, you need to change how you react to officers, this has got to be a partnership, and, and, as you said, that communication is key. That getting folks together, starting to understand why the differences are there, making people more aware of what those reactions are about is very important. And with regard to the community impact, and this is why I mentioned it in my statement, yes, obviously, a lot of people are being informed by things that are happening outside of our community, and some of their reactions are definitely about issues outside of our community. We want to make note of that and be aware of that, but we also want to acknowledge that people do have these reactions and do have these strong feelings, and they need to be addressed. So, I appreciate it, and I'm quite sure that we'll get into the report.
Bill.
Yeah, to follow up on a couple of the financial issues, I do believe that it's strongly in the compounding effect of the financial thing. I've seen a lot of people fall into that trap where they start to go down into a hole and can't dig their way out, and then they end up driving when they shouldn't be. And it just gets worse and worse. So, in your research, I haven't made a detailed through the whole report, but did you find any examples of any states or municipalities anywhere that had sliding scale fines?
Excuse me, not that I know of, and I'm looking around to see if other task force members are here, but I don't remember particular research. Eric was our go-to person on academic research.
Right. So, so there have been two temporary experiments with sliding fines. Right, so, so there have been two temporary experiments with sliding fines. One was in Milwaukee and one was in a particular area of Staten Island. The one in Milwaukee, in both cases, these were done as research projects. So they, they weren't really in the fabric of the permanent structure of the, the one in Milwaukee is not so well documented, but there's an extensive paper in the literature about the Staten Island study. And it appears to have been quite successful. But for whatever reason, there wasn't enough political will to turn it into a permanent arrangement following the conclusion of the study. There are several Scandinavian countries in which traffic fines are directly proportional to an individual's income. And the populations of those countries strongly support that. There was, there was an amusing story less than a year ago about a very, very wealthy Finnish businessman who was arrested for speeding pretty far over the speed limit. I think he was twenty miles over the speed limit in a, in a rather densely congested zone. And his fine calculated out to a hundred and three thousand dollars. So he, he bitterly, he bitterly, but, but he has an income of many millions of dollars a year. He complained very bitterly. He took his case to the public. And basically, the reaction of his fellow citizens was, you know, our society enables you to make enough money to afford that. If you think you can do better elsewhere, then go there. So, the, yeah, so it's very, very well supported by, you know, that system is very well supported by the people who are, who are in it.
Okay, and then, kind of along the same lines, I think it's justifiable to to issue more warnings in those hotspots. I think, when I first thought about that, I thought, well, then, you know, it's not really fair because those people may be more likely to repeat offend because, so you aren't really doing them any favors if you let them off easy. But then, when you think about it, it's kind of like when they put up those automated ticket devices, those fines are actually lower than what you would get from an officer because you're more likely to be ticketed. So it balances out if you're gonna be twice as often, twice, if you're gonna be ticketed every time you turn right on red, but you pay a hundred dollars, or else you get ticketed every other time by an officer and you pay two hundred dollars, the disincentive to violate is the same. So if you could work that out somehow in the hotspot areas so that, you know, the frequency of, the likelihood of being stopped balances out with the fine or the punishment, then it seems like that, that's a reasonable approach.
And this does go to one of the comments, which is the training that the police department is now doing about the purpose of traffic stops. Why are we doing these things? And why are they important to do? And, you know, recognition that, okay, we're doing these stops in these neighborhoods, perhaps to address other crime issues, but insofar as people are getting caught up and being, and getting worse and worse fines because of these other actions, maybe adjust to make sure that we're addressing the right problem. And I think that's reasonable.
And then, just one other point for now. You said you'd suggested to do follow-up statistics and studies. I wondered if you'd come across any kind of bellwether statistics so we wouldn't have to repeat, you know, seventy pages worth of statistics.
Right, one of the important things that the department did, and I suspect as they get experience with it, there's gonna be follow-up. Identifying on the ticket the purpose of the traffic stop. And they've divided it now into a couple of categories. I think that may change over time as the department gets experience with it. But the idea of identifying why the stop happened, one of the other things that we were looking at, length of traffic stop is an interesting statistic, but means a couple of possible different things. Additional time could mean that the person was being subject to additional checks and being more scrutinized. Could also mean that the officer was trying to help. We've heard of a couple of stories of officers who said, well, can you call your brother to come pick up the car so that we don't have to tow it? Or can you figure out, do you have your smartphone? You can show me where you paid the insurance bill. Which can lengthen the call dramatically, but that's a good thing. That's the kind of thing we want officers to do. So collecting data on not just the length of the traffic stop, but also the reasons for the extended length and maybe be able to look at that data to, to not only see what's going on, but we've found even just having the tick boxes reports that this is already changing officer behavior because they're thinking about it. They're doing, they're looking at it and realizing, oh, I should be making this stop for this particular reason. So, collecting the data is important so we can look back, but it's also very informative for the officers themselves.
Dennis?
And it seems from your presentation that, that one of the issues that probably wants to be looked at more carefully is maybe just a policy aspect of when a traffic stop is made. To what degree does the officer is held to the fact that he's working only in the traffic division and not in solving crimes that may or may not be explored because the person now is under his surveillance or surveillance during the stop? It seems to me that, that what the report is showing, or you're talking about, is that a traffic stop is, can be a minor experience perhaps, but it leads to deeper and more serious crime arrests due to the investigative quality of the interrogation or the search, or whatever the officer then takes as a next step. And would it be fair to the public to have limits set when such a search can be extended to other, other reasons or not?
Excuse me, and we did talk a bit about this, that traffic stops are used, you know, in part as simply checking to make sure people are driving safely. But they are also used in this hotspot policing scenario as ways to do that investigation. If you're parked outside of a house that has known crime activity and people pull up repeatedly, the ability to pull someone over for a broken taillight for whatever traffic violation allows you to engage, whether that turns out to be fruitful or not, depends. And we mentioned in the report, the Supreme Court has repeatedly found that doing that kind of investigatory stop is constitutional. But you're right, looking at the efficacy, looking at when you're doing those and what circumstances you're doing those, the report mentions is very important. So, I think that's exactly right.
Eric?
Yeah, I would just make a comment that's relevant to Dennis. I think it's implicit in the report. Maybe it's even explicit, but I don't think the report, there's something that's happened in West Baltimore, which is that in response to, you know, the, what was going on there with, with the public and the state's attorney and so forth, I think our police force, incidentally, I wanna go on record as saying, I think we have a really, really good police force. I think they're, they're responsible. I think they're, they, they, there is no, there's no evidence of either excessive or unnecessary use of force. And I don't think this would happen here. But what's happened in West Baltimore is that the police have stopped patrolling. And the crime rates have shot up. So, I think we have to be mindful that there's a balance. That, that we have to have, we have to have both fair policing, but also effective policing. And that's really, really a tough job. And we, but we have to recognize that, that, that's what we're striving for. And I think that our police department is, is truly and sincerely striving for that.
Dennis?
And then just, just to, you know, comment that, that there's a difference between, you know, purposeful and efficient policing, and then there's another term for fishing for, for issues. And I mention this because when I was a young person, I lived in a completely different state. I would be stopped in my car fairly often, and it was nothing to do with me. It had to do with the person who lived next to me, and all the questions were about my neighbor. So we don't wanna have that kind of experience happening in the, in this town, so. You know, there are places and times where, you know, a good intent may be the outcome in the long run, but you're actually violating a person's rights.
Aaron?
So thank you, Peter, for coming to give the report. I thank you for all of your service and your time on the Human Relations Board, as well as on this task force. So I'm, I've read through the majority of the report and still trying to absorb it all. So I'm trying to see this, this report and this issue through the lens in which it developed and why we're even talking about this. So as we, I would say that I am learning a lot about implicit bias. And I recognize the impact that it has on all of us. And I also see it as a more effective way to approach a sensitive subject like this. Because it, it sort of takes away any sort of assertion that someone is mean-spirited, racist, and things like that. So I find it to be an effective tool. I do want us to come back to, and I would hope that my colleagues and everyone listening would also take a moment to say that we are here having this discussion because there's a real disproportionate impact on African-Americans and African-American drivers in particular. And there are, and what that impact does financially and what it does socially and psychologically to our community and the relationship between the police and the African-American community. So I'm troubled by a couple of the comments that I've heard already by some of my colleagues because there's a desire to defend the police first as opposed to actually considering the pain, financial impact, social, psychological impact, fear, and sort of gripped, gripping concern that we have in the African-American community based upon the national perspective, as well as some very real, obviously, local incidents as well. So, I would like to see us approach this from a standpoint that says, how do we address the, not just the financial impact of it on the back end? Because I do think these are some very sound suggestions. The sliding scale, I think, is, is cool, the warning tickets. Because those things taken, they take into consideration that there is a disparate impact on this particular community. And we don't want to further burden the African-American community, low-income people, with financial burdens because of investigatory stops. But the investigatory stops are a major concern. Because I've read through most of this and I've come to a couple of the meetings, but the one thing that is, that the council as a whole, I think that the chief and others don't want to discuss is the impact, the social impact and conditioning, the implicit bias that African-American males and Latinos are seen as drug dealers, are seen as thugs, gang-bangers, this, that, and the other. And so that implicit bias plays a role into the investigatory stops. So if I already have an implicit bias, and I have been conditioned to believe that this individual is likely to commit these particular types of crimes, then the impact of my implicit bias results in this disproportionate, these disproportionate stops. Which, of course, leads to the financial impacts and all those particular things. So, looking at the impact of the cannabis policy, I appreciate that suggestion. I think that the attitude and disposition that police departments across the country, in particular, Urbana Police Department, has in relationship to low-level drug possession, has an impact on how we police and how, and those calls for service. I'm reminded of a situation where a young man was recently targeted for selling cannabis and raid, raided and all that kind of stuff. So to me, that meant that we had to put man-hours on investigation, controlled buys, following, and then ultimately arrest this individual, and he loses his job for selling cannabis. I'm not condoning it. What I'm saying is that if the society is moving in a particular direction, then if we did, it could limit some of this impact that we're having on, on our community. The, the hotspot policing, I wanted you to expound upon that a little bit, and the STEP. Could you explain that a little bit, the STEP in the hotspot, well, not hotspot, but the STEP in particular?
So, the STEP, and I was going to quickly look up the, the expansion of the acronym. One of the officers, or, here we go. STEP stands for Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. So, my layman's understanding of this is that when there are particular traffic problems identified, whether it's a particular corner that has a large number of accidents or a large number of violations, people blowing through red lights, that the UPD sends out particular patrols to look for traffic violations and only traffic violations in those areas, not related to other crimes. And so the finding was that when we looked at the STEP data, the disproportionateness was much, much lower than when they were doing other kinds of policing throughout the city.
But it still was disproportionate?
Yeah, the number, the disproportionate numbers, the African-Americans in the STEP program are still stopped at about a twenty-five percent increase in rate compared to white drivers. But if you look at the numbers for, the general numbers, that's a much smaller proportion. But yes, it is still disproportionate.
So the STEP program is designed, from what I understand, what I just heard you say, to specifically target traffic violations?
Correct.
Okay, and still there's a disproportionate number of stops?
Right.
Because the experience that we have, that I had personally, and that I hear and I've heard for decades in the African-American community, is that if you compare how many people got stopped for the license plate light being out to the African-American community, to Cherry Hills or something like that, you would find an interesting difference. How many people get stopped for items hanging from your rearview mirror would be, you wouldn't find the same thing. I work at the university. Everybody at the university has something dangling from their rearview mirrors called a parking pass, right? So, those are the types of experiences that we see. So these investigatory stops that actually turned into drug stops, that's what they were really about. Based upon the crime numbers that we have, we have far less, even in the midst of this sort of crime spree that we have, or this violence that's taking place now. The numbers for drug arrests, cannabis, low-level crack and cocaine and stuff far outweigh the numbers that we have for violent crimes. And so, a large percentage of these stops, regardless of what's being said, the impact is that those stops are used to try to find drugs. And then those drugs turn into other fines and fees and stuff that we end up seeing that have a disproportionate impact. So I argue again publicly for everyone to see that I do not believe argue again, publicly for everyone to see, that I do not believe that we should continue fighting this lost cause of a failed drug war, that has, has a disproportionate impact on African Americans, Latinos, and poor whites, because it is not working, and our police department still going, chasing down that rabbit hole is also a part of this, being the way that it is. So, I will stop for a moment, I'm sure somebody will say something else that causes me to come back. Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick comments, and of course, I expected you to give me the, the toughest, toughest things to address. But I did want to mention that the numbers, the, the experiences that you're talking about of folks, that getting pulled over for minor stuff, I, I believe our findings indicated that those aren't really happening as part of STEP, that those kind of things are happening as part of additional patrols and doing those-
Investigatory stops.
Investigatory stops with regard to hotspot policing. And, and by the way, those terms are not necessarily used by the Urbana Police Department, but that's what the literature uses, so that's what our report has been referring to. There is one other point that I wanted to quickly address.
What, just for a moment, right there, the investigatory stops, maybe that is the area where the warnings, or the sliding scales, and things like that could also be first implemented, because we know that those are targeted stops, basically, so.
And, and, which leads me exactly to the second point I wanted to mention, which is, yes, looking at how to address people who are swept up in doing other kinds of investigation, but except for the, the traffic violation they ended up with, they are not involved in that investigation. Do, implementing the kinds of recommendations that we suggest really would help. And it was to one of your earlier points, the experience of drivers, the experience of African American drivers, and especially male, young male African American drivers, cannot be diminished. I, I mean, both because of just implicit bias, but the larger national impact, the experience is devastating. I don't think that can be addressed without doing the kinds of engagement that we are suggesting. We gave some specific examples. It's gonna take a long time, and it's gonna take some acknowledgement by everybody that the experience has been bad for a long time, and we have to make an extra effort to, to do something about this. I'm very conscious, as I talk about this report, that defending our current policies tends to diminish the experience of folks. And those of us who have an opportunity, either as council members, members of the department, me on the task force, to look at these issues carefully, we need to be careful not to diminish the experience of folks, because we're the ones in positions of authority, we're the ones who can do something about this. And so, yes, we do want to acknowledge, when we can, that where we're doing a good job, and I, I even acknowledge very heart, you know, wholeheartedly, that the city council and the police department have exposed themselves to looking at themselves in this way, and it's hard. But yeah, we need to make the important thing, the experience of folks who are really desperately impacted by this, and concentrate on them, and not worry so much about our feelings and whether they're getting hurt. So, I, I do appreciate that.
Okay, Mike Madigan?
So, as chairman of the Traffic Commission, I have a little bit of experience with the STEP program, all right? So, just wanted to kind of expand upon what Peter is saying about what the STEP program is about, and this intrigues me a bit, because we've had several citizens come before the Traffic Commission to ask for stop signs at intersections where they think a danger exists, because of speeding, or those types of things, or where there is a stop sign. I've learned the term "California roll," which I just thought was sushi, but I have found out that it's also a, a dangerous thing that people do in rolling through stop signs. So, what the police do as a public service is when these citizens complain, when they come and say, "We have a problem," the, the police department sets up a, a time, or a, a few times, to observe that area, okay? So, in the, in the two years that I've been the chairman of the Traffic Commission, I have not had, and, and I will, I will be glad to be corrected, but I don't believe we've had one request for a STEP patrol in a minority neighborhood. It's all been in the state streets, Mumford, other areas like that, where it's, it's, it's less people of color, or it's a diverse neighborhood. So, the fact that there is a disparity in those neighborhoods as well is a bit telling and may actually erode the argument here, all right? So, maybe what we ought to do is look at STEP enforcement and the rate of traffic violations, because there is no targeting in these STEP enforcements, it's observing every person who comes down the road. So, there's, there's no selective enforcement there, it's, it's basically a, a scientific observation. So, I mean, I think maybe we ought to take a little harder look at that and see what those numbers truly mean, because if there is a disparity of minority violations in those neighborhoods, that are not minority neighborhoods, then I wonder how that plays in this whole thing. I'm not trying to be adversarial, I'm just saying, that's an interesting statistic to me, if there's a disparity among STEP enforcement.
So, I, I think there are two things to keep in mind that might address some of this. And we already mentioned implicit bias as a possibility, but I think one thing that we had trouble with in doing the statistical analysis, which is of interest, we found big disparities when we did the GEO code cut of the data in front of Meadow, in front of Meadowbrook Park. Well, there's something interesting about that. The huge population down there is, of course, Clark Lindsay, which is predominantly white. But because Windsor Road is such an artery, the population of drivers is very different than the population living there. So, some of the disparities get addressed with possible bias issues, some of them get addressed by just the way we're looking at the data, and it gets very complicated.
I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to ask you what you mean by a bias issue, when it's a STEP enforcement, when every car is being recorded?
So-
For speed, or for rolling through a stop sign. There's no bias possible, every car is being reported.
Pete, isn't this the problem I brought up at the beginning, that we're using population data? And the real issue is who's driving on the street?
So, this was what I was referring to in the Windsor Road example, is the population data gets different. With regard to bias, when it comes to STEP enforcement, I actually, and I'll have to defer, and we will make an attempt to go into some further explanation, I'll have to defer to our statistics folks, but I want, and also to our police folks, I want to get an idea of, and I don't know myself, is everybody ticketed for every violation and every STEP enforcement action? Is everybody given a warning? Is there some distinction? For speeding, I would hope that it's a radar gun, and-
A threshold, there's a threshold there.
There's a threshold, and that's all there is. I don't know for other STEP enforcement, whether there are rolling through stop sign kinds of issues, whether there's any disparity in what counts. And, but, in, in all honesty, I, I would say we're seeing much smaller percentages in the STEP program, which I think in large part are accounted for by population differences, especially in areas like, on arteries where the driving population is very different than the residential population.
Honestly, I think very rarely a STEP enforcement is on an artery road. It's usually on residential streets where the local residents, the neighbors to those streets, are concerned about the speeding and the cutting through, as opposed to driving on arteries. So, that'd be another thing to look at, is how many of those are actually on arteries, and, and more oftentimes, and it could be the same people driving on, you know, cutting through on other streets, and, and so, I'm not, I'm not making any insinuations there, I just, I don't necessarily think bias has found its way into the STEP enforcement. And I think the, it's a neighborhood service, it's a neighborhood service that the police are providing to try to, to try to respond to very localized concerns.
And I'll make sure to get more data on this and, and give you more information in the report.
Okay, we probably have to move on, but let's say Diane, and then someone else down here wanted to talk. Okay, Diane?
Actually, it just reminded me of my other big question going through this. I, I believe I remember reading that half the people stopped on Urbana streets are non-residents. Is that right, in the traffic stops?
Eric is shaking his head vertically at me, so.
So, so my question is, how do all of the analyses handle the fact that, that 50% of the people are non-residents, 50 are residents, and you're comparing it to Urbana's population? So, I assume that that's handled somewhere in there, but can you tell me where, where you address that?
Right, so, we divided up, so, remember, we did multiple different cuts of the data. One set of cuts was doing it specifically on GEO code by GEO code, who's living in those neighborhoods, and, and, you know-
But pulling out the non-residents versus residents?
Um, we did, I believe there was one attempt at that, but I don't know that we ended up with enough data to be statistically significant.
That's correct. We only have the overall data on residents versus non-residents, but we don't have residents specifically broken out in all of the, the subcategories, that, that the overall data was, was sliced and diced. But, but the great majority of people, 50% were from Urbana, but I think something like 80, or between 80 and 90% were from Champaign-Urbana. And so, the fraction of African American population in Champaign, a little bit different from Urbana, but it's not enormously different.
But the actual numbers are, are double, then, if you're, if you're including everyone stopped. I'm just, I'm just concerned about what you're using in the numerator, and what you're using in the denominator to come up with your, your proportions. And, and we don't have to talk about that tonight, but that's what I was trying to find in this study, how that, that situation was handled.
And there is a great deal of explanation of that in the appendix.
I guess I better read that appendix.
I, I, you're a braver person than I, but yeah, there's a lot in there.
Okay, Aaron?
I, I, and, and the Reverend has reminded me twice that it's not that complicated, and I am a chicken about math, so I, I will defer to her that-
Okay, I'm gonna dive in then. All right, thanks.
That you all should dive in, I am a, a baby when it comes to this stuff, and I should stop imposing that on you.
Okay, Aaron?
The, based upon my observation, is that the common denominator is that most of these folks are black. So, whether they live in Urbana, Champaign, they traveling through from Rantoul to Chicago, the data says that African Americans are stopped disproportionately. So, that's the common denominator, whatever the numerator is, that it's black folks that suffer the brunt of this whenever it goes down, financially, socially, psychologically, okay? So, we can keep trying to sweep that away, and come up with different reasons why it looks that way, but that's what the impact is. And so, again, I would appreciate if we would look at it from that perspective, as opposed to trying to find ways to come up with reasons why it's really just not as bad as we might think it is.
I'm not trying to sweep anything away, I'm trying to just make sure we're operating from data that, that is, is accurate. And certainly, no one is trying to sweep anything away.
Who, who gave the numbers for the city of Urbana to IDOT to study? Where, where did this, where did these numbers come from? Did they come from our police department?
Yeah, there, there's been a-
Did we self-report those numbers?
There's been a requirement for some number of years now, that for each ticket, there's additional data that is collected by the department, and that data is turned over to IDOT.
I believe President Obama, when he was in the Senate, or something like that, came up with something like that, to make sure that we could track traffic stops by race. And so, it's really, really telling to me, and I'm just gonna say this publicly, because we have no problem talking for an hour about bricks, but when we start talking about race, everybody's impatient and feels like we gotta move this conversation along, get huffing and puffing. But we can talk for hours about trees and bricks and all that kind of stuff. This is exactly why we're in the situation that we're in nationally, because it's an uncomfortable topic, but nobody really wants to spend the necessary time to address it. So, I'm not gonna be pushed along on this one, so y'all can hold your breath, or whatever it is that you feel like you have to do, but I'm gonna say what I feel like I need to say about this topic. So, this issue, when it comes up, we keep hearing about non-residents and all kind of stuff, it does not matter, they black. So, whether it's a STEP program, and I think that you, Mr. Madigan, you say that it's a scientific process, right, which does not have any, which means that it is cut and dry. And then, soon as Peter asks you, do we have any information about, hey, the autonomy that the officer has, can they give a warning, can they give a ticket, can they say, hey, just slow down? Absolutely, that exists. So, there's no absolute in that. That, that, that goes out the window, that it's a scientific process, and allows to enter the implicit bias that exists there. So, this, let's just stop, okay? This is what it is, well, that's, I'm, I'm much more open to us talking about, hey, how do we address the impact that's taking place? I think that the community, the African American community in particular, can appreciate, saying, listen, there's a sliding scale. We know that there's a lot of gun violence that's taking place, and we want to be safe on our streets all over the city. So, there's some understanding and patience for investigatory stops, some, because if, if it's going to be defined as good police work, we can understand it to some degree. But if indeed, there are a lot of people caught up in that net, there should be some way to respond to that in an appropriate and fair manner. So, we're open to those particular things, but I'm not gonna sit here and listen to us continue over and over again, after decades of this being an issue, for us to continue to try to find ways to appease the police department, and to act like we don't have a real issue here. I would really, really appreciate it if we would just have a conversation that is really about what the issue is, and the impact that it has on the African American community, just deal with it.
Aaron, I would like to point out that we are gonna have many discussions on this, this is just one of them along the way.
You know, Mayor, we hear that all the time, and then, you know, when?
Well, I mean, we got, we got so much time to, to do our business tonight, so, someone else here wanted to talk? Someone else? Okay, we got two over here. Who's first?
Mine's quick.
Okay.
Just to add to, to Jim's workload here, in relation to the stuff I said earlier, could we also find out what our options are on existing fines, what we can do with existing fines? I know some places have amnesties, and, you know, you pay a tenth of it, and you're done, and things like that. I'd like to know what our options are on, on, on existing current fines.
I, I have interpreted your comments, and I'm going to undertake, our division will undertake, two research projects. One, compare what state fines are versus city fines, i- i- if there are similar fines for the same offenses, or fines for the same offenses, and then whether home rule, and I don't know the answer, because I've not done the research, whether home rule can be utilized to adjust what otherwise would be state fines. Absent, if there's a home rule exemption, then no, we won't be, the city won't be able to do that, because home rule will be exempted out. I don't know the answer to that, but we're gonna look into it.
Okay, thank you, and I'll leave that to the, to, to, for you to work with the task force, whether they want to include any of that in their report.
Well, even when the task force is finished, we're not finished with this topic, right?
That is my sincere hope, and the sincere hope of the entire task force.
Okay, Eric?
So, one of the things that, that we didn't look at very carefully, and it just has occurred to me tonight, is, and especially with respect to STEP, is the age distribution of people who are ticketed. Because, now, I don't know what the age distrib, nationally, the African American community is, is younger, demographically, than the white community. I don't know if that's the case in this community or not.
We actually did collect some of that data, that the African American driving community is somewhat younger.
Right. Right.
The, one of the findings in the statistical analysis section was basically that the demographic differences are not accounting for a significant portion.
But they may account for the STEP discrepancy.
I, I don't believe we cut it down that far.
Yeah, but, but the other thing, and, and so Aaron probably didn't like my raising that, but, the issue that I would support Aaron on is, I think we have to look really hard, whether it's in the context of the traffic stop study or as a freestanding, a freestanding topic, we really need to look at the racial discrepancies in cannabis arrests, because they, they actually are more extreme than the racial disparities in traffic stops. And I think there's a very real question about whether the, the cost to our community of simply not enforcing cannabis laws is, is greater than the cost of having those laws enforced in a, apparently discriminatory fashion.
And to that, I will simply say, the mission of the task force was to look at traffic stops in particular. The Human Relations Commission looked at the ACLU report on the disparities in cannabis. It, it's a serious issue, it, it needs to be investigated quite deeply.
Okay, Bill.
It seems to me like one of the most important ways to, to find out where the bias is, if, when, and if there's bias, is by complaints. And I wondered if that's addressed in the report, as far as the ease of filing complaints, how, what, what prevents people from filing complaints? And, you know, just, if there are ways we can make people feel more comfortable about being honest about their experience when they were stopped and, and what they thought their issues were.
We, I'm very sorry for this. We did give some suggestions along those lines in our recommendations. One in particular was perhaps expanding the Mayor-Citizen Voice Program to allow for more informal reporting of problematic or, you know, difficult citizen-police contacts. I know that the CPRB gets some amount of complaints, but we had several discussions about involving the CPRB in this, given their role, given that they have to be seen as neutral between the department and the community at some level, that that might not be the best mechanism to start discussing these issues, but, yeah, having those opportunities open, we certainly would recommend.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience and indulgence on this very difficult topic.
And we'll see you next month, too, right?
Um, I hope that the next time you will see me is with the report in hand in October.
Okay, but you're welcome to come if you want.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Let me see, I have Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. We're in public petitions and communications now, and they would, do not wish to speak, but would like to say they're still.
Yeah, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what?
Um, yeah, speaking to this issue, I, you may, I don't know if this is on the agenda.
Okay, well, we're, you already filed this, so we're, we're going with that, but we, we're, we will talk about this other times. I would want to give a chance to, to someone else to talk.
But since I'm.
I understand, dear, I understand, but we have a long meeting here.
But I just want to say one word.
Okay, you want to say one word? I bet you want to say more than one word, but come on up.
Okay, one sentence.
One sentence, okay, one paragraph.
The only thing that I wanted to say is that, um, uh, they, they were mentioning about, and I just want to verify with, uh, Dr. Jacobson, Jacobson, because he was on the committee. They were talking about, there was a, uh, uh, the chair here was mentioning, uh, uh, and let me, and let me just say it. The number one reason why white people got tickets was because they, it was, they, uh, got stopped was tickets. I mean, the reason they got tickets, the number one reason, it was in the report, because I, I, well, anyway, let me just say it, because I promised one sentence, was, the number one reason was, like, disregard for the law, like speeding, uh, one or two miles, or three or four miles, or stop signs and all that. But the one, number one reason African-Americans got tickets were, uh, lack of insurance and those kinds of things. I just wanted to say that, was it, am I right?
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? I think our sustainability coordinator.
I wanted to share with council some news of three awards that the city has earned in the last few months for its sustainability work. The first one, the, the Urbana City Building was awarded, or was named an honorable mention in the Illinois Green Office Challenge. This was a, a challenge that was managed by the Illinois Sustainable Technology Center, and it engaged offices throughout central Illinois to undertake a, a number of activities across energy, water, waste, and procurement to make their offices more environmentally friendly. The second award, the mayor processing and the city of Urbana, were named in, as honorable mention, in the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Awards. And that award was for the city's participation and leadership in the Urbana-Champaign Energy Star Challenge. That's a program that the city manages and leads, which engages building owners and managers to benchmark, track, and improve their energy use in, in their buildings with the U.S. EPA's Free Energy Star Portfolio Manager. The last award I want to mention is Technical Assistance Award that the city was, was given from a group called Illinois Growth Solar. The technical assistants will help the city undertake a couple of pieces of work to help improve the local, on, uh, local rooftop solar energy market in our region. So we're pretty happy to, to receive that technical assistance and very pleased to get the recognition from these other awards.
Thank you very much for all your work on these things. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? We will move on, I don't believe we have unfinished business that we're going to deal with, I'm sure we have lots of unfinished business. But this is, one, one item here is forwarded from the special city council of July 13th is ordinance number 2015-07-068, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, 3106 North Cunningham Avenue for Green Vista's LLC and Stark Excavating. So, here we are.
Thank you.
Maximilian, Maximilian Mahalik, Max Mahalik.
Thank you. Um, do you guys see the screen on your end?
No.
No.
I have to plug in the, uh, sector.
Oh, there we go. Perfect.
No.
Yep, here we go, we're in. Thank you, Lori. Okay, I'm going to try to be quick with this. Does anyone lack the handout of the communication passed out earlier? We all have that? Great. So the bulk of the annexation agreement was presented on July 13th, and three concerns were brought up by council. One was stormwater drainage from the subject tract. The second was the potential for a noise disturbance created by the proposed use. And the third concern was screening between the subject tract and a non-contiguous residential lot to the south. As noted in the agreement, the applicants promised to provide several mechanisms to manage drainage on the site. The Urbana Public Works Division has provided a preliminary approval of the applicant's site plan, including these drainage mechanisms. And then, as you see on page two of the memorandum for this evening, Director Bill Gray is satisfied that Stark Excavating can meet all drainage and pollution regulations with this quote here. I believe you see my cursor, it's the first quote on page two. Brad Jameson, with Stark Excavating, the applicant, has also stated that the planned processes on the site will not produce particulates, and all efforts will be made, excuse me, all efforts will be made to minimize any production of particulates from the planned processes, including the use of water sprayers and dust collectors. The city council also voiced concerns regarding a possible noise disturbance created by the proposed use. This was particularly pointed out because, as you will see in Exhibit B to the memorandum, just one second, there is a residentially zoned lot to the south of the subject tract. This residential lot is located 372 feet to the south, while the home on this lot is located 872 feet to the south. A lot zoned IN1, light industrial office, is located between the subject tract and the residentially zoned lot. City staff believes that this significant distance between the residentially zoned lot and the subject tract will help minimize any potential noise disturbance created by the proposed use. Moreover, the applicant promises to follow all regulations of the Urbana Noise Ordinance, and any violation of this ordinance will be treated as a nuisance by city staff. Council inquired into if there were hours of operation limits placed on the Mervis Recycling Center to the south of the subject property. No such requirements were listed in the special use permit issued for that use. City council members also voiced concerns over the visibility of the subject tract from the residential lot to the south. The zoning ordinance does not require screening along the southern border of the subject property due to the presence of this IN1 zoned lot in the middle of the two. As seen in Exhibit F to the memorandum, which, one moment, here we go, I'll zoom in there. We see there is a line of trees along the southern border of the subject property. The applicants have pledged to go beyond the zoning ordinance requirements and preserve these trees to help minimize visibility, as well, as well as any noise created by their planned use. And just to give some orientation here, this picture was taken from that residentially zoned lot looking north towards the subject property, and that's the tree line in the distance. Furthermore, when the industrial loan, industrial zoned lot located between the subject property and this residential lot is eventually developed, screening will also be required between this lot and the residential lot. On page three of the memorandum, you will find a statement from Greg Reynolds, the owner of this residential lot. He is in approval of the applicant's planned use, and that information was provided in a statement to city staff. You'll see that is the quote at the bottom of page three. Take a moment to let you guys read that. And lastly, as you see, we've received an email from representatives from Frasca Field, and they would request a 35-foot height restriction within the annexation agreement. However, city staff is satisfied that all federal regulations, and particularly those regulations by the FAA, will ensure that the development does not encroach onto Frasca's legally protected clearance zones. And just wanted to make sure.
Max, can you, what does that mean?
Um, so because Frasca is an active airport, you'll have clearance zones, basically to protect the path of travel for planes as they land.
Well, I understand that, but how does that jive with what we got in this email?
Um, so, representatives from Frasca were under the assumption that there was a height limit on the Mervis property buildings to the south of our property that we're focusing on tonight, and they thought that was a 35-foot height limit, and there actually wasn't a height limit placed in that special use permit, so they had forwarded this request this afternoon, asking for the same height limit on the property we're focusing on here.
Is 35 feet recommended, is that what F, the FAA recommends, or is it higher or lower, or?
An actual recommendation by the FAA would have to, would be determined after an analysis of the actual site by the FAA, however, the, that would be upwards of 50 feet. Also, the applicant has promised to not, or, excuse me, has pledged to not construct any prop, uh, structure on the site that would be taller than the existing structures on that site.
And that's a two-story building.
Yes, with a small radio tower.
Oh.
And they have.
So what would be this total height, then, with the radio tower?
Uh, it's roughly, uh, I believe it's roughly 45 feet, and the applicant here is present tonight, if, and they can speak to that regards possibly.
Okay.
And, oh, sorry.
You have another question here, Eric?
So, so I just want to be sure I understand this properly. So the Frascas are requesting a, a city limitation that would, in effect, supersede the FAA requirements?
Yes.
And staff is recommending what?
Staff is recommending that we proceed with the agreement as drafted. That would not include that limitation of 35 feet, but rather we would refer to the FAA's regulations.
Okay, you have another question here, Dennis?
And so, if the highest structure on the, on the, on the current land is the radio tower, does the new ownership plan to use it? Will they take it down? Do they need it? And would that clear any problem that Frasca, my field, might impinge on their safety of their planes?
The plan for the radio tower has not been specifically specified in my conversations with the applicant. I do believe it would be demolished, and they were using that as more of a measurement of, of the height for any of the structures they were going to build on the site for their planned operations.
So they do plan to take the, the radio tower down?
From my understanding, yes.
Do they want to answer questions?
Um, I would like to invite the applicant up.
We can make it, we can make it tighter. We can make it tighter than them.
We have no immediate plans to tear down the radio tower, we just use it as a basis to say, there's no issue with the planes flying, and now with that height, if we were to build a structure of a similar height, they'd have no issue.
So you may have a 45-foot building at some point in time, would be your ability?
No, it's a concrete ready-mix batch plant. We believe the height of that tower to be somewhere around 60 feet currently, so.
So how tall would your building be?
Not higher than that.
Okay, all right.
So is it in the glide path of the runway for Frasca?
We are 400 feet off the center line of the, of the approach. It's where we, our site plan shows where the concrete batch plant would be, which is in the farthest reaches of our property from the center line of the runway. And I did talk with.
What are you defining as the center line of the runway?
The center line of the runway.
Like, well, okay, no, the, the center of the runway, like?
If the runway's.
The very middle, or?
If the runway's 50 feet, it's 25 feet. So if the, on the approach, the center of the runway.
So the nearest point of the runway to you, but is it in the glide path, was my question?
I'm not a pilot, I don't.
Do we have an aerial map of the runway in comparison to the site? Because I am a pilot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you appear to be maybe 150 feet north of the center line. You're saying 400 feet north?
I believe it's 400 feet, and our property's 1,300 feet from the start of the runway.
Okay.
And for reference, I did talk to Tom Frasca before this meeting.
Well, we also got an email from him that he was wanting a 35-foot restriction, so.
I talked to him and.
Imagine our dilemma.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess is the FAA, would this be within, you're saying that's a 60-foot tower? Is it lit?
I, I, the, the property's, there's no electricity to the, to the site, it is now.
So you don't know if there's a flashing light on the top of it or not?
I've never seen one, no.
Well, I mean, I think regardless of what we do here, the FAA will have the final say, if, if it's within the glide path or not, and, and whether or not it has to be lit. So if you were to build a, a tower there in the same footprint. So if you were to build a, a tower there in the same footprint, you would fall under the same requirement to have a flashing light at the top, probably.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's.
And we just, our site plan, the tower for our concrete ready-mix would be in the far northeast corner.
Right.
Farthest reach on our property line.
Which is 400 feet.
From.
North of the center line.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the owners?
The tower itself right now is how far from the center line?
Yeah, it's, the tower's roughly on the far northern part. This tract is almost like, it's skinny at the, at the frontage, and then you get the extra five acres in the back. But we're, we're a little bit juxtapositioned off of the, off the center line. If you go back farther, farther away from the center line of the road.
So basically, the concrete mixer that you're saying it would be about, would it be 60 feet high?
Uh, since we haven't acquired the property yet, we haven't chose a model. They could be upwards of 60 feet.
Mike, is the width an issue for the pilots or for, for Frasca? Was it just the height? Because the glide path and all that kind of stuff, if there's already an object that's there that's 60 feet tall, that's not, that hasn't been an issue, then the only thing that would, that strikes a nerve with me is that it would be, the width of that is somehow an obstruction of the, of the runway or something like that, and that it would be a solid building as opposed to a tower.
So I guess the question would be how wide is a concrete mixing tower?
Roughly 30 feet by 30 feet.
Okay, so 30 feet square.
There can be series of those.
So maybe 15 feet either side of where that tower is now? Is what you're saying? There could be a series of them?
There can be series of bins that hold the material to mix the ready-mix.
So how close do you think the, the southernmost bin would be from the center line of the glide path of the runway?
It will basically be, as you see the property line, it'll be almost in line with that radio tower, but further to the east. So as you have your.
So they'd be parallel with the runway? Or would they be going north to south?
Truly parallel, but.
Okay. Isn't it true, though, that whatever you come up with has to be approved by the FAA?
It's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay, so we could debate this all night, but it doesn't really matter.
Well, we also have the Frascas asking for a 35-foot height restriction.
Right, but our staff is saying that that is unnecessary. Is that correct? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Do you want to continue, Max?
I, I guess I'm confused as to, you know, what are we talking about then? If, if, why? No, I'm trying to ask you a question, because you just stopped a dialogue that I thought was fruitful or important for us to understand, and you're saying that FAA is going to make the final decision. Then what are we voting on for tonight? What are we voting on?
Would you like to explain what we're voting on, Max?
Yes, we are taking action on the annexation agreement as presented in July, I believe July 13th, including the rezoning from agricultural two county to city IN-1 for the subject property, and including a special use permit and a conditional use permit.
So we're not taking a position on, the email was just something that we were supposed to take in consideration. There's not a, we're not going to take a vote on adding that or anything like that?
Right, right. This is just the annexation, right?
Yes, including the rezoning and the special use and conditional use permits.
Okay. Okay, are you finished yet? Or do you need to say anything else? Then we can ask questions when you're done, perhaps.
Just a quick rundown of your options. As you know, you can approve the proposed agreement with a two-thirds vote, including the zoning designation of IN-1 light industrial office, as well as an issuance of a conditional use permit and a special, special use permit to Stark Excavating. Or you could approve with conditions. If you'd like to add conditions, I ask that you stipulate those conditions, or you could deny the proposed annexation agreement. And on June 25th, 2015, the Plant Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve the agreement as drafted, including the rezoning and the special use and conditional use permits.
Okay, we're having side conversations here, so perhaps we could do it in an orderly fashion. Dennis?
Yeah. So, Max Millian. So on our diagram, the pink area here is the proposed plant site. That's where the towers are going to be on the north, north edge of the property?
From my understanding, with the site plan submitted, yes.
Okay, so it's as far back from the, from Cunningham Avenue or Route 45 as it can be supposedly, and farther from the field, the runway's entry as it could be as well.
Yes, it would appear that way with the site plan.
So the plane hopefully would be higher up, and they wouldn't be coming down crop dusting across Cunningham Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Well, when are we going to see, I mean, are we going to be concerned about seeing the actual construction layout for the plant if it ever is built? Are we going to be seeing that? Or will that only be something that this, the planning department will see?
I apologize.
So are we going to see the layout of the actual plant, the cement plant, when that comes up? Once these people finish purchasing the property?
With the issuance of the conditional and special use permit, then those technical plans will go to the Building Safety Division for the permitting process.
And then how does Frasca become involved in overseeing the runway approach? Is that keyed automatically? Or is this something that has to be requested?
After conversations with our Building Safety Division, it was noted that representatives from Frasca would have to contact the FAA to ensure compliance with regulations. However, it was also noted by Building Safety Staff that it'd be open to working with the applicant and Frasca to ensure that all regulations and needs are met as appropriate.
So we're not going to be dropping the ball by not addressing the 35-foot recommendation tonight?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, Diane?
Well, then I'll move approval of ordinance number 2015-07-068, which is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement at 3106 North Cunningham.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Any other discussion or questions? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is reports of standing committees. I believe that's Bill Brown.
The mayor, mayor, you're supposed to vote. Was I supposed to vote?
They're waiting for me. I vote yes. Okay, that motion carries. Bill?
Yes, the committee, the whole met last week and forwarded several things to council with recommendation for approval. First up is ordinance number 2015-07-081, an ordinance approving agreement for use of right-of-way with McVilly Enterprises LLC, 214 West Main Street. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion?
Mr. Madigan's going to bail out.
Is that right? Mr. Madigan?
Upon advice of counsel, I shall recuse myself.
All right, you are recused. Did we, he didn't have to do that. Well, we could argue about that too, but did we vote? Did we have a roll call vote in the last one? Or not?
Yes.
We did. Okay, so we need another roll call vote. So would you please call the roll, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is resolution number 2015-07-038R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option for the Housing Authority of Champaign County to lease or purchase the former Urbana Townhomes site. For the committee, I approve. I move approval.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is resolution number 2015-07-034R, a resolution authorizing entering into an execution of a LinkUp Illinois Double Value Coupon Program grant agreement. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Diane?
Just a point of information. I asked last week about the amounts available, and it'll be the same as before, that a person can double the value of their link card for purchases up to $40. So up to $20 purchases, they can get $40 worth of produce at the market.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is resolution number 2014. Is that right? 2014?
2015.
That should be 2015-07-035R, a resolution approving an economic incentive agreement with the East Urbana Development Corporation. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is resolution number 2015-07-036R, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with the County of Champaign for animal control services. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2015-07-082, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual budget. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next is resolution number 2015-07-039R, a resolution authorizing entering into an execution of federal emergency management agency assistance to firefighters grant agreement. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2015-07-083, an ordinance to authorize execution of an amendment to contract for real estate purchase. Cities purchase of Barnes Mobile Home Park property between City of Urbana and the Weisiger Family Trust. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Was that Dennis?
I did.
Okay. A motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Yes, in that we put a lot of effort into assisting the Weisinger, the Weisinger family to, to move the tenants that they had. Are they cutting us a better deal?
I think it's the same price that we negotiated earlier. Mr. Madigan?
I have a question along those lines. I was just curious, can somebody do the math for me and tell me how much the city is into all-in on the purchase for this? It was 113 for the property, and then how much for the relocation services would we end up?
The relocation services was budgeted at $50,000, but we spent far less than that.
$27,000.
We spent $27,000.
So we're in at 140. And what's the size of the property?
Sorry, I already recycled my memo on this, so I couldn't find it.
One acre.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Eric Jacobson?
So I guess the only other point that I would mention is that the relocation services were really part of our social services budget. So they, well, I'll just mention that. So they were, they were, they were stuck in there, and I think that was appropriate because it was a, a service to, to people, but it was, I'm not sure if it should be counted against our cost for the property, but, but anyway.
I think anything the city spends ought to be counted
Well, I think anything the city spends ought to be counted against the cost for something. And I'm not being critical of the acquisition, I'm just wanting to quantify, you know, what the cost was for the size of the property. That was all.
Well, you know, the staff did spend a lot of time on it, too, but I think that every person that lived there is in a better living situation now.
I'm really not trying to be critical, I'm just asking what the cost was for the...
Well, I'm just saying what we accomplished.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah, we last year added the extra money to help the relocation of these individuals, knowing that it was going to be a difficult job, and Mike Bunce did a tremendous effort to locate them into better housing. Appreciate the Housing Authority's assistance and Randy Pregat as well. So, yes, it did cost a little bit of money, but, you know, as social services to the community, it paid out. And, well, you know, they could've, we would've loved to see a ten percent discount on this property, but we didn't get it. But the property's still valuable to the community, to the expansion potentially of the Public Works Department and their grounds, so, you know, I'm supporting it.
I think my comments have been misconstrued. I'm not...
I didn't say I disagree with your comments.
Okay. Not being...
We enjoy your comments.
Unsupportive, but apparently folks are a little sensitive on this subject, so...
We're not sensitive.
All right. And I would agree. I appreciate all of Mike's work on this.
Okay. I think we haven't voted on this yet, is that correct? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
I have to vote yes now.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
The real question is, now we're going to own this property, how many years will it go empty before we can actually build on it?
The real question is, how many pavers does it need? But anyway. Okay. Reports of special committees? Do we have any reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Aaron, are you raising your hand as an officer?
No, I don't know where I fit in at this particular point.
Okay, you fit in wherever you like.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Is someone coming up to give a report?
He was trying to escape.
Oh, he's just trying to escape, okay. All right.
Get a head start out the door.
Okay. New business, we have ordinance number...
Yeah. Quick update, I just want to let people know ITV Three announced two more neighborhoods qualified, so that brings four neighborhoods that should be up and running within the next several months on gig fiber. A fifth neighborhood has been submitted for approval, so we should very shortly have five total neighborhoods that will be part of the ITV Three gig structure, construction within Urbana. Additionally, I was trying to get an update from Trevor today, the existing neighborhoods, the census tracts that are already developed, will at some point be given an option to modernize their equipment and join the, and actually be part of the ITV Three system in the future. They have to complete some hardware-level work with those to make it compatible with the new system. And there's some existing work, I believe, some existing work was completed in the last couple of days between here and Chicago that will also enable these new services. So, progress is finally being made, and hopefully within a month, we'll have our first new ITV Three customers hooked up.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah, as a reporter, I'm just going to take a moment to say that the city's going to be enjoying the arrival of two different Sister City program delegations in early September. People from China-Haizhou district will be coming September first, and from Toulonville, France, September tenth through thirteenth, and we hope that you'll have an opportunity to mix and meet some of these people. Meanwhile, there's a new display up in the Urbana Public Library, Urbana Free Library, explaining some of the highlights of the Sister City program, and we hope that you also will enjoy seeing us in marching as a group in the upcoming Labor Day Parade.
Aaron?
So, there's a groundbreaking ceremony in Ward Three, twelve fifteen West Bradley Avenue. The Leaking Sons Funeral Home will be breaking ground on Friday, August seventh, at eleven a.m., so I wanted to announce that. And are there any, is there any TIF money left for my ward? No, it's all gone. I was just, thought I'd ask.
Trying to hand it out.
And I also wanted to thank Charlie, Alex, and Diane even made it over towards the end of the program on Wednesday. The Pathways to Apprenticeship Program was very successful, and so we had representation from the Human Relations Office as well as from the council. It was much appreciated. We had quite a bit of good information that was shared with us about possibilities and ways that the council could be involved in participating with a program that might be beneficial to help us address some of the concerns that we have in the community. The North End Breakfast Club, the National Council of African American Men, the East Central Illinois Building Trades, the State AFL-CIO, the NAACP were all partners in this initiative, and just thanking you guys for coming out, appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else? We'll move on to new business. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero seven dash zero eight four. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, an omnibus text amendment. We have...
Good evening. So, this is a multi-part amendment to the zoning ordinance that consists of a variety of pretty minor changes. The last time we had an omnibus amendment was in 2013, and since that time, we have processed three text amendments to the ordinance, so we figure it is time to republish the document. When we republish the document, we also take the time to do other minor changes that wouldn't require their own cases themselves, so that's why we are bringing this case forward. The memo and the exhibits that came along with this report summarize all of the changes in a couple of different formats, so I won't really go into the details of those unless there are specific requests, but I will try and briefly address two questions that came up earlier today. One of them was regarding a change to digital signs, which you can see summarized on page six, and then later in one of the appendices. And then there's a question about duplexes in the R seven district. We brought this to Plan Commission a couple of weeks back, and they voted eight-zero to recommend approval of this case to the city council. So, the question, let's see, question regarding digital signs, I think it may have arisen because of, I think I was, I may have misunderstood what we were asking for when I brought it to Plan Commission. So, I just wanted to clarify that the change that we are, the change that we are bringing up would apply to digital signs and not digital billboards. So, these are the smaller digital signs. So, we're proposing changes just based on the distance that we would be measuring the light, and the digital billboards stuff will be handled in the separate case that you've already seen. So, that, so the changes to digital billboards are pending, and the changes we are proposing are just to the smaller digital signs.
Kevin, can I jump in on that? Since that's my question here.
Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm concerned with the brightness of the digital signs, and to be, and if digital billboards get passed, something I don't support, but I do, you know, recognize that we have digital signs now. We had discussed a brightness level of point-two-five-foot candles for digital billboards, and for consistency, I would like to see the digital signs that we have at that level of brightness. So, that's where my point-two-five comes from.
Okay. Understood. I will, so I asked Jeff Angstrom about this because he's more expert on this than I am, and his reply was that, let's see, so he says the proposed change for the digital signs is based on industry standards and practices of other cities, and what we're proposing here is consistent with other cities. We still are proposing the point-two-five-foot candles for the digital OASS amendment.
So, are you increasing it or decreasing it, or holding it the same?
We're keeping it the same, it's just the changes, and let me find the page that that's on.
Okay, there's a question here from Bill Brown also.
I think I actually asked you guys to add this, so I can try to explain a little bit. It's that before, we didn't have any distance measurement less than a hundred feet, so for even the small signs that are only twenty-four, thirty square feet, the closest you'd have to measure it would be a hundred feet away. So, by default, you'd be measuring it since the distance, I think it's distance squared, is that how light diminishes? So, by just changing the distance, we're going to get much less bright signs for those smaller signs, because now those will be measured at fifty feet, so we'll get, if, you know, if it's, I think that's been part of the enforcement problem, is that we were measuring from too far away, basically. Now, we'll be measuring from half the distance, so actually the brightness should go down by a square, but, so it would probably be a greater difference than what it would be from point-three to point-two-five, but that's not to say point-two-five might not be better. But I think, I think it's worth passing the distance changes, even by themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The, let's see, the second question was pertaining to, we're proposing, our staff was proposing to allow duplexes and duplex extended occupancy in the R seven district. So, that's explained briefly on page four, and then later on, you can see the text for the changes we were proposing. So, really, the idea behind this was that the R seven district allows intense uses like dorms and rooming houses by right, and we are just proposing, since there, since those more intense uses are allowed, we're just thinking it was logical to allow duplexes, which are less intense, in that district. Now, I know this came up, this had come up several years ago, I think, and it was before my time here. We haven't really had time to research why duplexes were left out of R seven in the first place. I did look at all of the R seven properties, though, in the City of Urbana. There are forty-five of them, and out of those, I think there were two that might increase in intensity if they converted from what they are now, which is a single-family residential rental unit into a duplex. So, I think the amount of properties we'd be looking at would be small, but we would be willing to research this more if need be.
Charlie?
Yeah, I think that's probably the reason I'd like to either take this out of the omnibus right now, and my preference would be to send this to committee so that we could finish researching this and understand it, because there are some R sevens that are grandfathered in, and I don't understand how those would apply. So, we have some basically single-family homes that are grandfathered in as R seven. Right now, for example, if they were to burn down or be seventy-five percent destroyed, they'd have to be rebuilt as a single family, and I think that's preferable than just blanket allowing duplexes here. So, I really would like to look at this issue very, very closely, because there are reasons that R seven is treated differently. We've had other issues with R seven, so I've started circulating this amongst my constituents. Some of them have very long-term memories on these issues, including a previous council member, so those conversations have begun, so I'll be able to get more information. So, I'd like to see at least that part go to committee. I still don't understand the brightness issues as well. I'd like to understand those a little better, understand where Bill's coming from, and make sure that we're, I basically want consistency between digital signs and potential digital billboards, so that we're treating them in a very similar fashion. And again, I don't want to make an on-the-spot decision here until I completely understand that issue.
Well, Charlie, I think the staff would like a little bit more time, so instead of the next committee, how about the second committee?
Whatever, whatever they'd like.
Would that be okay?
That would be good. Would that be...
So, are you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to send this to committee then, at staff's discretion here, to bring it back when they've got it researched.
Diane?
Well, I would, I'll second it, but I also have a couple of other questions, if it's okay to ask them now.
Sure. We want to know what to research. Go for it.
You changed some, you added some definitions, including something for a microbrewery, but do we have a definition, considering the couple of the development agreements that we just approved will include a coffee roastery? Is that a word?
I believe so.
A place that roasts and sells coffee, and then wine bar? Are those things that we need to add to this for definitions as well? We don't have a coffee roastery in Urbana, so I'm not sure that's in our code.
Yeah, that's a good question, and generally, the zoning ordinance just tells us to look at a use, if it's not in the use table, it says, "Look at a use that's most similar." So, I think, I'm not sure what a coffee roastery would be similar to, if we even have anything that would be most similar. That's how we would deal with it now, not sure.
Well, if we need to add it, I'd say this is probably a good time to add it. Then, my other question focuses on the home occupation category, where the language states that no more than one person other than members of the household residing in a dwelling unit is engaged in the home occupation. And I wondered what that number was based on? Is that similar to what other cities use? And, you know, you're looking ahead to how high-speed fiber is going to change home occupations and what people do in their homes, and is one person other than somebody who lives there a reasonable limit?
I can take that one, Kevin, if that's all right.
Sure.
We are working on a more substantial revision to that section, to the home occupations. What we're bringing for today were just a couple of cleanup things because we weren't ready with the larger item, and I do think that the larger item did require its separate case and its separate discussion rather than shoving it into the omnibus.
Okay, so this will stay, this will stay as it is, and then we'll look at that number maybe in the future, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis?
Two other topics, and actually, I appreciate the conversation that the other members of the committee have, the council have brought up. One, I appreciate really a lot, the new language for the historic landmarking. We've had in the past issues about one of the criteria for making a landmark building nomination, and that has been about whether the building had to be built by a master builder, a designer or architect, who was an individual genius and influenced an area. And then the question came up about, is it a beta-tau house? Was it Royer or was it Royer and his company? And so now, we have finally settled that one. We have new language, which allows not only him, but the collective work of his entire firm to be added as a consideration. So, I think that's just and fair and very good. And then, when the question came up concerning table VIII, which is eight-seven, in the parking requirements by use, and I don't have a page number for that, but I was noticing that we have the number of spaces required for, like a furniture store, a furniture and appliance and service store, is one space for every four hundred square feet of floor area. Can you explain to me why a bicycle sales service store would have to have even more parking? One for every three hundred square feet of floor area? If anything, I would think that the people who are coming to have their bicycles repaired would probably come on a bicycle, would not need parking spots, and I would think that if anything, instead of three hundred square feet, it should be five hundred. What's the conversation there, and is that something that we could look at?
That is definitely something we could look at. I've asked the same thing. We also require more or less parking for automobile sales versus bike sales. That's the one I always bring up. So, the table that you see here, we're not actually proposing to add those requirements. That's just something that's currently in there, but it's definitely, we could definitely look at our parking requirements for certain uses or just in general.
Well, I think we just, in general, require so much parking for stores that are sometimes in dense urban areas where people should be walking and arriving at various, in different modes, bicycling being one of them. So, yes, I would hope that we would start reducing the number of parking required in many different kinds of plans, and this is certainly one, and I realize it's not a new issue, this is one that we've had, but I hope that we'd address it maybe in the future. Come back to that perhaps.
Mike Madigan?
So, yeah, I would agree with Dennis on that, although have you ever been in a furniture store with one of your four or six customers? Not very many, and a lot of space. But the other thing, too, is, man, if somebody's bike is broke, they're bringing it in their car, right? So, they have spaces for them. Are you carrying it on your back? What? Okay. And on the landmark thing, I would say, I guess all I would say to that is better than never, when we finally figured out a way to make it legitimate. But on a serious note, I'm going to support the motion for two reasons. One, I don't understand the whole duplex issue that Charlie...
Charlie, yeah, I'll turn that on. The whole duplex issue that Charlie is raising, and I do want to understand that better, but equally as importantly to me is, I was a political science major for a reason, because I had to add political in front of science because I'm not very good at science, and I want to understand the, all the changes here to the digital sign ordinance, and what I would ask in addition to any other work that you're going to do on this is an inventory of digital signs in Urbana. Like to see, I know we don't allow the, like, the little portable ones and that kind of thing now, which I frankly support, but I'm just wondering how many current businesses we're going to impact by the changes in these, and they seem to be fairly drastic changes. They seem to be fairly substantive changes to me. You're talking about reducing, reducing the amount of feet by which the brightness is measured pretty substantially, so I'd just be interested in knowing the inventory, and I would also like to see what, what, there needs to be some kind of comparative analysis. Okay? What are, where are we today? What's three candle feet? And then, based on these, what's the difference going to be? How many businesses are we going to have to call and say, wow, you got to turn your sign down? And do they even have the technology to do that? We've talked to the billboard folks, and they have very sophisticated technology. Some of these folks who have digital billboards, they may be ten or fifteen years old. Do they even have the capability? Are we going to make them go dark? So, I have some serious concerns about this.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay. Who's first here? Eric?
So, one thing that I'd like us to consider, as long as we're considering duplexes anyway, we've never considered a difference between owner-occupied duplexes and duplexes that where both units are rented out. And I think owner-occupied duplexes are really an excellent path to affordability for people to be able to own. And I would like to see us somehow make that distinction and encourage that type of development. And I'll just be really frank, this is coming from personal experience, because we absolutely had to have an arrangement like that to be able to afford our family, so.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah. In echoing Mike's comments about the digital sign stuff, I think that's why I'm saying, well, whatever we do with digital signs, or should be consistent with what we do with digital billboards, so that the long, you know, long-term that they mesh, you know, the timings involved and things like that. So, I think it should be, it should be consistent between the two. And if we're talking about point-two-five-foot candles for digital billboards, I would think we'd want to do something similar, measuring it in an appropriate way for digital signs. And it may be that we have to grandfather some things in to accomplish those as well, and that should be something we should be willing to look at as well.
Eric? Eric?
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think that the signs that we're talking about are much smaller than billboards, so it may be that the, it may be that it may be okay for a smaller sign to be brighter. And, and, so anyway, I, I, well, there's, there's, there's a, there's a quotation for this, "A foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of small minds." Just joking.
Okay, guys, let's, let's just tone it down here. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Mr. Smythe?
I would like to point out that, that a bright, bright light shining in your bedroom window is a bright light, period. You know, whether it's a small, small, very brightly lit sign or a large digital billboard, and so the amount of light coming at you is, is what I'm after, and, and, you know, something bright as you're driving by it can be a real distraction. So I'm, and, and again, I think in fairness to everyone, we need to have a level playing field.
Well, I, I call the question and with the intent to approve Charlie's motion.
Okay, can you, do we just have a motion, just a voice vote? Yeah, okay. All those in favor of sending this to committee until the staff is good and ready? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, finally, I have appointments to boards and commissions, the tree commission, Mr. Byrd, the plan commission, Daniel Turner.
So moved.
I'll second the nominations.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.